Welcome to council meeting. We'll get started tonight. Thanks for everybody here attending in person and all of those watching online or on Channel 17. We're going to start off, we've got a lot of people here to watch the swearing in of our new council member. We've got some reverb there. And we'll get to that after we have an inspirational message by Councilman Argyle and then we'll go to the pledge after that.
Thank you Mayor. Just a quick comment. Today started our legislative session in Salt Lake and they've already are quick to start passing bills and get to work up there. We're grateful for those who represent our district in our area. Some of us had opportunity to meet with them and assess some of those specific needs of the city and the watches that we need to watch for our city and we're grateful for their service and as this goes on we'll continue to hear more, stay involved with it. There's always something that impacts us when they come up with some of those five to a thousand laws that they seem to pass each session. They do impact our lives. Of course, the best one that they talked about was a tax break right off the bat. That's a good thing we always like to hear. So anyway, just to let you know that's going on and I'll offer a prayer. Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful this day to meet here as Mayor and City Council to discuss the needs of this city, Spanish Fork. We are grateful that we have the opportunity to serve. We ask that thy Spirit be with us as we discuss the needs of this city, that we do so in a pleasing manner. We ask you to bless our first responders, watch over them, keep them safe, protect them. We're grateful for the citizens in this community and the quality of life that we provide for them, that we continue to do so and make this a great, safe place to raise a family and to grow up. We are grateful for this city, Spanish Fork, and we ask and say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
We've asked Councilman Gordon to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would the audience please rise? Please repeat the flag after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May he be seated.
Let's see, did Pete make it from down the road? We wanted to make sure, do we need to wait a little bit? He's the camera guy. He's good? All right. If he's here, then we'll have the oath of office given to our newest council member, Councilman Kevin Euler, who missed us last week and we're glad he's not stuck somewhere, but he's back here in good old Spanish Fork. So our city recorder Tara Silver will administer that oath and hopefully his family will come make him look better by standing up here with him. Councilman Euler.
I, Kevin Euler.
Having been elected to the office of...
Having been elected to the office of...
Spanish Fork City Councilmember.
Spanish Fork City Councilmember.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey and defend...
Obey and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Yes.
I hope you told the kids they have to stay for the whole meeting. We've had more than a few swearing ins and retirements and stuff this week. Geez, we're trying to change things up here, I guess, but that's a good one to have. So welcome, we're excited for your service and I'm sure when we go through council comments we'll all roast you pretty good. We'll move after that to employees of the quarter. We have a couple of those here tonight. Who's first on Employees of the Quarter?
Let's go with Pete Hanson.
Okay. Who's doing that?
Are you introducing Pete?
Do you want me to introduce him?
Usually it's the department.
All right. That's really the question, right? Is Pete Hanson, I think this is somebody who absolutely doesn't need an introduction, especially to our city council, right? Everybody knows Pete. He's actively involved in everything that the city does, every event that we're filming.
He doesn't even know he's getting...
He is, he doesn't know, I guess. So Pete's going to join me up here, he's going to say hi. But Pete is fantastic. Pete is, for those of you that don't know, everybody in TV land, Pete runs SF-17, our Channel 17. So he is the man behind the curtain when it comes to filming our events, filming our city council meetings, this meeting. This is his crew that runs the cameras and makes sure that everything is online for everybody out in TV land, as the mayor used to call it, to be able to view these events that the city does. And I don't think a lot of times that Pete gets the credit he's due because there is a lot of behind the scenes work that goes into the productions, the videos, all of the time spent that's more than just pressing record and then putting it on Channel 17. There's a lot of editing and finesse and thought and planning that goes into these events and Pete does a fantastic job. So I couldn't be more pleased to have one of my employees, especially Pete, be employee of the quarter. Pete!
Well, this is a total shock. I had no idea this was happening. This is wonderful. Well, I thank you Brian for all those kind words, but really, I have a great crew. I have a great crew, you know, led by Travis and the others who are part of the team and they make it shine. So I'll take some credit, but only the fact that we have a good team. We have a really good team and I appreciate all they do. I love working for Spanish Fork City. I love doing what I do. Every day I'm happy to wake up and know that I get to go out and produce something cool for the city and so I really, really enjoy that and I enjoy working with all of you and the rest of the city and the community in general. So thank you so much for this honor. This is, wow, cool.
Anybody else have anything to say about Pete?
I probably work with Pete the most. We film every other week for Studio Chatter and he, I think we've worked super well together, but you are always there through everything. I think just like what Mayor said, this last week we've had swearing ins and goodbyes and there's been so many things and it's so nice to have such a professional photographer at every single thing. We really do appreciate you and all the time. I talked to Jen Olson, who's Miss Spanish Fork Pageant Director, last week. We were brainstorming some new ideas and I said, "How about call Pete and put a video together?" And he's always so thrilled. I think we get nervous to use him because he is such a professional. We think, "Oh, he's not going to want to do it for us" and he's always so happy. You have a new mayor that's already like this with you.
Oh, he's cracking the whip.
Yeah, and you're doing an awesome job. So congratulations, very well deserved.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thanks Pete.
Can I have a Pete poem?
I didn't make a poem. I was surprised.
I would tell you, last week I called Pete and Travis in a panic that a neighboring mayor of one of our neighboring cities had a national television producing company that was scheduled to come and film something for them and they bagged it at the last minute, said, "We're not going to make it, you know, sorry about that." And he had this pretty big event for their city, ready to go, and he called because he knew what we have in Spanish Fork. He knew we had Pete, Travis. He knows the professionalism of what we put out in Spanish Fork and of course, we help the neighboring community, which is very cool. And they dropped everything and spent a night taking care of a neighboring city even. So appreciate that Pete and everything you do for us. So thank you so much, very well deserved.
Congratulations.
We got three, but I heard that one is not with us tonight, right? So we're only doing two?
No, they're...
Everybody's here?
We got all three, yeah.
All right, who's doing?
So you want to do Brody? Let's do Brody Lambert. So Dave's going to...
My old neighbor.
A little farther back than that.
Yeah, a little further back, my old classmate.
I go further back, maybe I knew when he was two.
Really?
Well, like you guys all said, you all know Brody Lambert. Some of the people out there don't, but I think Brody deserves the recognition for his efforts and the time that he's put into being an expert building inspector here. We hired him quite a few years ago out of the water department and one of the first assignments I asked him to do is to become an expert. Been an expert on heating and cooling design installations and things like that and how they interact with the energy code and the building code and he has totally done that. We've got people that contact us from other cities and other design professionals that contact us all the time and look to him for advice and how to take care of that. He's done great with that. He also has taken initiative to organize and assign the different inspections that come through from the contractors every day and he assigns those out using his knowledge of the city, his knowledge of the travel times, what those different inspection types need and requirements for time and he uses that expertise to best use our staff's time. He's done great. He's been a mentor for some of our other inspectors that are new to the job and as they go up through the certification process and become better inspectors themselves, he's always there to lend a helping hand and give advice to them. But yeah, I think Brody's just done a great job and I couldn't say enough good things about him. So I appreciate his time and I know the service he's done for the city is much appreciated.
John, thanks. Add a couple of things, this is as good as it gets, really. I know how easy it is to take certain things for granted and having building inspectors that do their jobs the right way is one of those things. If you never hear about what building inspectors do, that's a really good thing, at least in my experience, that's most of the time the case. You're very fortunate, I think, as a council to have a bunch of inspectors that work very hard, that take their jobs seriously, that are pragmatic, they're practical, they can work with people, they can get things done and that just generally represent the city the way that it should be represented. And Brody is a integral and essential part of what has become a great team. The things that John referenced that Brody does among his colleague inspectors here in Spanish Fork has been extremely important over the years, him having been the first inspector that we hired with John Little as our building official. All of the others have come after Brody. And incidentally, and John touched on this, having hired Brody with no certifications and literally having had him start at the ground floor level and work his way up to where, I absolutely will echo what John said, Brody is an expert. He's an expert at things that you don't want me to go into much detail about, but they're critical to making sure that current residents and future residents, future property owners, current property owners in Spanish Fork with what typically for us is the biggest investments that we'll make, they're protected. Brody is one of those people that's looking out for them. I can't express how grateful I am to have Brody in our office and likewise, like I said, his colleagues. And I really mean that. I think we're very, very fortunate to have a great group of building inspectors. Some of you know that at times in the recent past I've expressed some concern about our ability to attract building inspectors. They have services that now are in very high demand and we've been very, very fortunate. So very, very pleased and Brody, thank you. You've done a great job. I'm sure you'll continue and thank you guys.
So I found out this morning actually too, so I don't have anything planned and I didn't change. I enjoy working here. I know a lot of you from a long way back outside of the city office and consider you my friends and we work with a great team. Got a lot of great employees in the Community Development Department. We're a really tight-knit group and get along great. So whatever you guys approve, we make sure they build it. So like working here, appreciate what you guys do and the sacrifice you do for the city and just a good place to live.
Thanks Brody. Anybody got a Brody story?
I got a Brody story. Me and Brody were waiting to, we were talking in church once and he's waiting for a heart. He's on the heart recipient list and he's got his little machine keeping his heart going and he's like, "If I get a call right now, I'm going to have to go get my new heart and you're going to have to talk the whole hour." And I remember praying that you got your heart, but after. And it came and it came after.
Yeah, I forgot about that assignment.
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't forget about it.
You're a pro, Brody. Thanks for your work in Spanish Fork. You're an important part of what we do here and we appreciate you. Thanks a lot. Okay, we've got one more employee of the quarter.
So I get the privilege of introducing our next employee of the quarter. Chris Thompson and Corey Pierce are out of town today, so those are normally who would get to introduce this young man, but do any of you know what is, what puts the highest demand on our wastewater system each year? It's coming up, Super Bowl, right? So we have Zach Staley here, wastewater operator, and we are so grateful not only for the wastewater during the Super Bowl, but all the time. So Zach, I still remember when Zach applied for the position and Zach has a unique set of skills that take a lot of time to develop and he was well versed in the wastewater industry and I just remember how badly Corey wanted to make sure that we got you. And so I'm glad that you've been, how long's it been now?
Four years.
Four years. And I remember that I was chatting with Zach recently and he's been working heavily on the new sewer treatment plant, which is probably the biggest project the city's ever had. I don't know Dave, did you have a, it's one of the biggest ones. And in the write-up, the nomination for Zach, I'll just read this so you can hear just how great Zach is. "Zach has been a great addition to the wastewater team in the last few years. He works hard and always follows through on projects, large and small. Zach has developed an efficient maintenance program for all the equipment in the plant. I now have full confidence that our equipment is serviced per manufacturer's recommendations and can track the history. He is heavily involved in the design of the new treatment plan and offers valuable insight from the operation standpoint. Zach is reliable and always on time and anxious to help everyone in our division as well as those outside of our division. He truly takes pride in Spanish Fork City and contributes to the progress in wastewater, public works and the city." So congratulations Zach.
I'm grateful for the opportunity and I am, I guess, humbled and proud that I was considered for that. Working for Spanish Fork City is a great privilege and it's been a great move for me. I came from a different city and it's night and day difference, mayor, city council, everything. So thanks for your support for all our employees and everything you guys do and yeah.
Thank you Zach.
Can I share a Zach story?
Yes.
Let me share a Zach story. He has the luxury of working in one of the most important yet unsung departments, right? The sewer treatment plant. But another time of year that stresses the sewer system is when we have heavy rainstorms and so the man-made strain on the system certainly happens with the Super Bowl, but nature made influences with rainstorms. So you recall on July 22nd, we had a massive rainstorm during what many of us remember being the Fiesta Day celebration, which overloaded the fairgrounds and caused some significant challenges across town. And it was, it was great to see all the people that responded to all the challenges that the water created, but Zach was one of those employees that came out with a vacuum truck and he spent a number of hours that night in different places sucking water out of holes and sumps and whatnot. And Zach, I think it was about 11:45, maybe 12:30, I can't remember when you and I kind of stopped what we were doing there at the fairgrounds, but we knew we had some challenges that we had to overcome at the fairgrounds for the next day's performance and Zach stayed long to the next morning, if you will, past midnight, helping to clean up some water in the parking lot so that through the night it can drain out of the stadium. And the dedication of an employee like Zach really does speak to the quality of who he is and the quality of employee that we've got there. I want to share that story, thanks.
Thanks Seth. Shane, do you remember that night that it rained in the road over? You do that? We'll show you a picture later. Councilman Marshall, he remembers that well.
You'd like to take your picture and have all of the employees come up?
Yeah, Pete, Brody, Zach. Just get over here a little bit.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. Thank you.
Great way to start a council meeting and get some deserving employees some recognition there. Thank you for all you do for Spanish Fork and in those departments, important work. Item number four, we'll move on to public comments. Anybody here that is here in council chambers to address the mayor and city council? If you are, yes, please come up and let us know your name and...
Okay, I'm Janet Pine and I was told that I have three minutes, so I'll try to keep it brief. I'm just going to read my statement so that I can keep it to that three minutes. So my name's Janet Pine. I'm here to share my experience with you in hopes that you will evaluate what happened to me and make necessary changes so it's not repeated. On December 27th, I was exercising in my room and at some point I fainted. When I came to, I yelled for my daughter to call 911. The ambulance arrived, took my vitals, assessed me. My blood pressure was very low, I was clammy, along with severe stomach and chest pain. I was also short of breath and could hardly string two words together. My hospital diagnosis was a pulmonary embolism, acute pancreatitis, influenza A and moderate dehydration among a few things. I can't explain how terrible I felt. I wanted to desperately get to the hospital so they could begin the process of diagnosis and administer the necessary meds to ease my pain. The ambulance crew that came to take me took too long to get to the hospital, or took too long to take me to the hospital. I called the EMS secretary and she said that their records show that they were there for 30 minutes. I kept stating that I hurt and I wanted to go. The ambulance crew were trying to get me to sit up and contemplating whether a family member should take me. I told them no. If I was coherent enough, I would have explained that I felt terrible and needed to go, but I couldn't. I feel that I should, I feel that it should have been clear to see based on my condition. 30 minutes is too long, especially when someone is in respiratory distress. When I spoke with the EMS secretary, she stated that there is a statewide protocol to be there 30 minutes. In speaking with two different cities, they said they have heard of no such protocol. One stated they do everything possible to get out of people's home as quick as possible. The other said that they get in and out within 10 minutes and anyone with respiratory distress, they take immediately. Please don't get me wrong, I have an immense respect for EMTs, paramedics and firemen. We cannot do without their service, however, I think it's necessary to evaluate how long they spent, how long they spend at someone's home, especially in desperate situations. You guys have any questions?
Did you end up taking the ambulance to the hospital?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the other thing. So my neighbor, she's here, what she observed was, one, that they circled the block a couple times and I feel like, so we are on 2300 East, right by Canyon Road, and they have that new fire station, which is like maybe two minutes away and I feel like they should have been there right away. They should have known my address, they should have just been there right away. The other thing too is it just was super, super frustrating because I felt terrible. I could barely talk and I kept saying, "I hurt, I hurt, I want to go." And she was trying to get me to sit up, trying to get me to roll over, trying to talk to me and then she, my neighbor also observed and I also kind of knew it too, when I was in the ambulance, they took about 10 to 15 minutes before they left as well. The sirens did not go on and so to me, it was too long. It was so frustrating and I just felt terrible. I just, what I needed was morphine, I needed, you know, oxygen, I needed to be administered those things very quickly. I don't know if our EMTs can do that. I'm told that they're advanced EMTs, I don't know if that's correct, but I just feel like I shouldn't have needed to say those things, you know? So anyway, I don't know. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, glad you're okay.
We hear you and we'll take it to heart.
Okay, well, I just hope that it's evaluated and looked into a little bit more because I don't want it repeated with anybody else, so.
Thank you Janet. Appreciate you. Thanks for coming. I'm glad you're okay. Seth, can you speak to maybe our review process in the city?
I appreciate it. Thank you Janet for coming. She and I had the opportunity to visit last week. I took some of the information from her and have passed it on to supervisor of the EMS division and she will pull the details from the call and review the nature of their response. One thing that I told Janet and I'll repeat here, that we should do and do reviews on these kinds of calls, these circumstances and if they were acting outside of the scope of their training or if they were doing something beyond what they should have, they can review that, train, retrain and if necessary, discipline. That isn't what Janet was looking for and I appreciated the comments that she shared with me, but most importantly, that they review, train, retrain if necessary so that circumstances, if done incorrectly, aren't repeated and that certainly will be something that they can review and we can report back.
Thank you Seth. Thanks again for coming Janet, appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment that would like to speak to the mayor and council?
I just wanted to add to her, she's my wife.
State your name.
So I'm Todd Pine.
Yes.
And so...
Class of 98.
Yep, 98, it's great. And so anyways, a similar thing happened like a week after that. She kept on getting fluid in her lungs. Anyway, she passed out on me at home and she was incoherent and stuff like that. To kind of add to the urgency of a change, I didn't want to call the ambulance because of our, you know, response before. And so I just picked her up and took her in my car and I was respectful of, you know, traffic laws and things like that, but I felt a certain sense of urgency on my part to take matters into my own hands and I mean, if I wasn't, you know, being a responsible person, I would have, you know, maybe caused other issues in the community by breaking traffic laws, things like that. So I think that's another issue to be looked at as well.
Thanks Todd. Perfect. Thanks Todd. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to council comments. Let's start with Councilman Argyle, if you're okay going, Councilman.
Yes, thank you Mayor. Just a couple of things. So with the new year comes a few new assignments that we are put on some boards by the new mayor. I had the opportunity to attend a Rotary Club meeting. It was a business meeting that discussed the year in review and their future meetings and their future things. their future things that they are going to tackle this year. And the Rotary Club is a good community involvement community. They have sponsorships and a few things, and so all that was discussed. It was a good meeting. Also, I'm over the youth council, so I got to attend my first youth meeting. It was an interesting experience. They tell me that we have 60 youth council, which is awesome to think that there are 60 youth that want to be involved in the politics of Spanish Fork City. They held their meeting, they debated a bill that was on, that's on Capitol Hill right now. I hadn't seen that bill because I actually had looked through a few bills that was coming, but they debated and they actually voted to change the bill to a better, a better idea that they had. And then we played a game called Kill the Frog. Was that right, Tara? So I got playing a game and I got killed as a frog, so it was an interesting experience. But grateful for these youth that want to be involved. Tomorrow morning, we go up to the Capitol for Officials' Day. We get an opportunity to meet with some of the senators and watch some bills debated and have breakfast and lunch with them, and I'm looking forward to going with them and serving on the, with the youth council. So I'm excited. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Kevin. Good luck. Let us know if we can help and wish you the best of luck and your family and it's a ride, it's a journey, so enjoy it. I'm glad, excited to serve with you. We, earlier today, we swore in Chief Matt Johnson, and it was a wonderful experience to swear him as the 45th chief of our city. So we welcome you, Matt, and really appreciate your willingness and being qualified to, to serve. Matt was sworn in by his wife, who is a judge, and that was neat because I would agree with Mayor Mendenhall that I challenge you to find another situation where that might happen. And I would dare say that's probably pretty rare.
Does she have to sign a contact of interest form?
I don't know what they, I'm sure they worked it out at home. But, but looking forward to work with you as well, Chief. Wanted to just give our, my condolences and as well as on behalf of the rest of the council to a former employee who passed over the weekend. Brent Frost had retired roughly six months ago and, you know, just a near and dear friend, I would see him every morning in the gas station and just days before saw him and things were fine. And just heart and condolences really go out to him and his family, so just wanted to mention that. Chad, excuse me, Councilman Argyle mentioned Legislative Day tomorrow. The session started today. We, as your local officials, we invite you to track the bills, to get involved, to see what's going on. Last week, we had a town hall here in, in this very room, and our Francis Gibson was replaced by Steve White. And Steve is our representative of about a third of Spanish Fork, mostly just east of Highway 6, Mapleton. And so here you have myself, Mayor Mendenhall, Councilman Marshall, and what's Mike's last name? Councilman Snelson from Springville. And so I joked with Councilman Snelson that normally, you know, we don't like to take pictures with Springville councilmen unless we beat him in sports, but he obliged us for the photo and it's good to be in the same room and discussing bills and the certain things that will be discussed up at the Hill. We will go up tomorrow as a group and represent as your local officials and we have these, we have these guys on speed dial and we talk to them, we ask them to represent us very well in our area. So appreciated that opportunity. In the garbage world, we, we have our solid waste meeting next week. I'll report on that the first of February, but just wanted to mention that we did have a fire yesterday at the transfer station and only bring that up because it could have been a lot worse. I credit, I credit some of the workers for using their training. They was inside the compactor, they got the compactor open, they got the fire out. They know which truck it came from and they'll continue their training and find out. They've, they've talked to the, the group that brought it in through their dumpster service and, but, but very proud of the workers there at the transfer station. We had a fire last year that was, was very, very expensive, hundreds of thousands of dollars, where these guys, they followed their training, they got the fire out and knew how to, you know, get it out of the transfer station and avoid any other injuries or, or damage. And so just wanted to report that. Mayor, I think it's, it's really important as these, these individuals have their training, they do it, and, and another example of, of helping save people and as well as resources in this situation. And then lastly, Councilwoman Beck and I, we were able to sit in today on some bid review process for the new Spanish Fork 17 building that is still in the design phase and selecting a, a general contractor for that. And so as we continue to score those and, and rate those, we're excited for those that have proposed and we'll, we'll report back to you who we select on that. So that's all I have for tonight.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Beck?
I, just really quick, I want to welcome Kevin, Councilman, Councilman, how does it feel?
It's great.
Awesome.
Excited.
You're going to be such an asset to our council. We're super excited to have you here and the worst part's behind you, the campaign. That's the hard part, so welcome. And welcome Chief, Chief Johnson. We're super excited to work with you and congratulate you on your new role. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Marshall?
I'm not prepared. That's too short.
We're ready. Get a give it some more time.
Yeah, there are pictures, nothing.
I know, I, you boys are on your toes.
I don't like this, I don't like it. I too want to say it's nice to have Kevin on board. We missed you last couple of weeks ago, but it's good to have you here. I'm looking forward to serving with you. I think that all the smarts is on the side of the table now, so. Are you ready? You folks on that end? Not that it's a competition, but it's a competition.
I don't know, Steve Runcor pretty lopsided, random assignment. Is he counting?
The assignments are going to change.
Remember, age comes wisdom.
I'm just going to leave it. So this last week, I am on the Utah Lake Commission. We met over in Orem and had a good conversation about what's going to happen to the lake, what could potentially happen to the lake. This year at the legislative session, there's a bill to introduce a Utah Lake Authority, which would have some more control over the lake, be able to collect taxes and invest back in the lake. That bill is out for review right now. We can comment on it if we like. We currently have a seat, Spanish Fork has a seat on the Utah Lake Commission. The commission would dissolve and the new authority would take its place. Right now, Spanish Fork doesn't have a seat on that new authority, so it's something we probably ought to talk about as we move forward. At that meeting, there was a presentation, there was two presentations about a project that is proposing islands in the lake. They would use dredge material to build islands in the lake. That's fairly controversial right now. We heard from a professor at BYU and then we heard from the proposal itself. I think for the citizens of our county, there is an 18 to 24 month process they have to go through to get all through the environmental clearances. So there's plenty of time to comment. No one's making a decision about building islands or not building islands today. There's going to be plenty of opportunity to comment. Please do review the literature, review their reports that they put out there and make some comments on what you think. But there is time, there's not, there's not an island in the lake in the next little while, so we're starting to comment. Like both council members have said, we, we had a chance to meet with our representatives over the last little while. They are in session. I urge you all to participate. I know that each one of our representatives and senators are, they want our input, not just elected officials, but they want the public's input, so participate. Read a bill, give them feedback. That's the only way they're going to understand what your needs are and what your wants are, so make sure you do that. And they're very willing to listen, so take advantage of that opportunity and provide them feedback. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have anything specifically to report on, but I'm very excited and looking forward to serving the people of Spanish Fork. We live in an amazing community, surrounded by greatness. I'm also excited about the committee assignments I've been given and look forward to getting involved and serving there and being able to report back on the needs and, and things that are taking place with, with those different committees. I'm grateful that today I get to share my swearing in with, with Chief Johnson's being sworn in, and that was quite an incredible meeting for those of you that, those of us that had the opportunity to be there. That was, that was really neat, something I won't, I won't soon forget, so congratulations and look forward to working with you.
I did not acknowledge Matt, Chief Johnson. That was amazing and to know somebody, I've known Matt since he was 15 and had a chance to work with him at the ballpark and he and his brother and to see someone you've grown up with take that, that oath and be that committed to our city is pretty impressive. So I'm proud of him. It was, it's cool. We're in good hands. I'm not proud of that picture, but I am proud that I'm standing in a line with him. He's a good man and we're in very capable hands, so congratulations.
Okay, yes, piggyback on what's already been said. Welcome, Councilman Euler. We, we talked a little bit about you last week when you weren't here, but again, the thought that came to my mind about you is coming from somewhat Spanish Fork royalty. You probably grew up in these chairs messing around as a kid because your dad occupied the office over here. So all the, the Euler family and the institutional knowledge that exists in, in getting you as an elected official here is something that I consider a resource and, and excited to, to draw on that as, as we need. The, you've, you've been a pro at the planning commission, and so we're excited for the experience that you bring from that of looking over a bunch of proposals and, and your style there and your pragmatism to be able to look at projects and, and help lend an ear and an eye and recommendations to that, so.
Try and ask more questions than Shane does.
Well, I'll bet that side will be heavy on the questions if they're not heavy on the knowledge.
So I can see that, but that's, that's good. Welcome, welcome. We're excited to have you. Spanish Fork Dons are playing the Golden Eagles in basketball tonight, so it's the in, in-town rivalry. If you, I'm sure the millions that are watching this, there's probably 100,000 watching that, but thanks to, to our, again, our cable channel that's able to make both of those available to our residents, that, that you can watch it on TV if you're not there in person. But good luck to, to both, both places. Oh, what's going on?
Just kick back.
Just leave it up.
See how quickly that side of the table just wanted to watch the game.
It's kind of funny. Mayor Laigson did say before, you know, leaving office that he was a little concerned that although, you know, Spanish Fork Don of class of 98, my kids, this will be the first mayor probably that has kids going to Maple Mountain High School, right? And so, yeah, I, I got both, I got both of those gears, so I'll, I'll wear the right hoodie wherever I attend and on tonight, I don't have to attend. I'm here, so I'll be neutral. But good luck to both, both squads. I will tell you, Coach Johnson of the Dons have got some good karma this year. They have helped tremendously at the senior center, which Councilman Euler is, is over. They have set up and take down chairs many a time so far, so if it translates into wins, it's the good karma that they have going on by helping out down at the senior center. So thank, thank them publicly for that. Echo what Councilman Gordon said about, one of, one of the good ones in, in our city, as we talk about city employees and honoring them today, we were very saddened for the Frost family to, to hear of the passing of, of Brent Frost. We call him Frosty. And it's on just a few weeks ago, and, and so that's a, that's a big one to, to take. You can see working for the Spanish Fork Rex Department, Parks Department for 36 years. Dale, you could probably go on for a couple of hours about Frosty and what he's meant to your department, but that's, that's going to be a tough one. Our prayers, our thoughts are with the Frost family and, and the whole department, the whole city that, that was touched by this man and the good service that he stepped in and, and helped wherever it was and, and always his smile whenever we saw him, wherever I saw him, was, was just infectious. And so we're going to miss him and, and we'll, we'll honor him this week, obviously, with the rest of, of the city, but from, from this body to, to the Frost family, thank you for, for sharing Brent with us and, and again, our condolences, thoughts and prayers are with you. It's already been said as well about Chief Matt Johnson. Welcome. We're excited, Chief, to have you in your new role. Something to see a, a couple of times this, in the last seven days, having a ceremony for Chief Adams, to have that final call over, over dispatch. It's hard to keep your, your emotions in check when, when you hear that, and it was, again, hard, you know, for those emotions when, when you signed on as the new, new Chief of Police today. But standing up there and looking at that crowded room, and I could tell when you stood up there and saw those men and women in blue that stacked the back of that room, the camaraderie, the, the feeling of, of that department and the support we have in Spanish Fork to keep all of us residents safe and, and, and healthy in our community was truly something to see. So I know you have their support, you have our support, and, and we, we all look forward to, to working with you for the years to come. So good work. Lastly, Pete does a lot for us, but Travis and Pete and their crew from SFCN took their Saturday to help us out with a, a project that maybe people, some, some do know, if you go on our website, you, you could know this, but it is, tomorrow is Spanish Fork's birthday. And so we decided we would put a little video together to, to highlight it. We had a, a good plan, the best laid plans sometimes don't come together because of COVID and because of, you know, everything else that seemed to happen of trying to get the whole council there. Councilwoman Beck was there for the whole time and then had to leave at the last minute, but you'll see Councilman Argyle and Councilman Marshall in this, too. Councilman Euler was still in quarantine, so we didn't bring him along. But, but this was a really cool little video and you'll see it shared and played for, for a couple of days or weeks to come, and it's fun to, to celebrate our birthday.
Happy Birthday, Spanish Fork Incorporated, January 19th, 1855. The home of pride and progress is 167 years old. We have a rich heritage of Franciscan priests and Icelandic pioneers. Every July, we cowboy up with the biggest PRCA rodeo in the state. We take America's pastime seriously and it results in state championships. We had cable and fiber to the home before it was cool. We love our officers, firefighters, and EMTs. Come celebrate with us in making 2022 one of the best years yet in the home of pride and progress. Happy Birthday, Spanish Fork!
I think First Lady Mendenhall was meant to be there.
You think so?
I think so. Great. I know she's watching because she's one of your biggest fans.
Oh, yeah. So that's the first time she's seen that, yeah. The fun, the cute thing about that was that little blonde girl of mine, Monroe, 10 years old, her birthday was Saturday, and so it was set up to come shoot that, and she walks in the, in the city office and we all sing Happy Birthday. She thought it was a birthday celebration for her, but we just went with that, so I hope she's not watching. But, but 167 years old, the home of pride and progress, what we've talked about and went over so far in council meeting and we do every week, and Chief Johnson said it actually very well today in his, in his speech, community policing, you know, police work has definitely changed in the last decade, the last, you know, how many years you've been a, a policeman?
Twenty-seven.
So it's changed from when he started to where it is today, and that speaks to, again, the home of pride and progress. We're proud of where we've been, we're excited of where we're going, featuring some of the, some of the really neat things about living here and why people like to live here, but I can tell you the next 167 will be even better. And, and we, we'll, we'll lean into the changes and the progress that comes before us and, and really enjoy celebrating that with all of you and all of the residents. So thank you for doing that, Pete, Travis. Thanks, Nick, for lining that up and... So thank you for doing that, Pete, Travis, thanks Nick for lining that up and, and getting that together too, that'll be fun to, to share out to the public. Okay, before we go to consent items, we do have a, a 101 that didn't make the agenda, it's, it's informational, but Travis Warren is here to, um, present the new aerial map of the city. This is a really cool feature that we're excited to, to show the, the residents, um, something that often when people call and ask about something, it's really cool to direct them to our website because this, this is pretty cool tech, as my 15-year-old kid would say, sweet tech, so take it away.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, Spanish Fork and, you know, in the GIS mapping program we have here, we like to be kind of the standard that other cities look to in creating tools and, um, you know, being able to give both the city employees tools and information as well as the public. So I'm going to let someone that sits on the backend of a lot of this present it, well, I run the backend of it over here. Um, Sean Beechers worked hard on this and getting this into place to make sure it functions properly, functions how we want it to function, so I'm going to let him kind of present near map and I'll run the backend.
Come on up, Sean, he's got a nice tie on, like it.
So this is, as Spanish Fork always is, progressive. We're always trying to make things better for everything and we came upon this and it's, the great thing about near map is it's cheap for aerials. And not only that, in the past, we've had one aerial every two years, now we get two aerials every year, which is fantastic because it allows us to see the changes that are happening and it allows us to make better decisions as we go through stuff. And Travis is going to show you some of the areas, uh, that might highlight what we're seeing. The other great thing about these near map imagery is now we're dealing with two-inch resolution versus six-inch resolution, which means we can zoom in tighter and see more detail. As you can see, the Spanish Fork High School, you can already see the Dons field that, uh, had just been built not too long ago, which is really, really nice. So these areas that you're looking at are good as of September of last year, so it's quite recent in what we're seeing.
We go to Councilman Gordon's backyard?
Thanks Shane.
So you can see our new parking lot that we just built, uh, if you were to zoom in just a little bit tighter, the other thing that we can see with these new aerials is it get, as it refreshes, you can see, for instance, where the, uh, air conditioners and, and those are, you can see the detail that's in there that you couldn't see before. You won't be able to see the tractor on the old aerials, but.
No.
But anyway, the detail's there and then he's going to show you one more area in the Legacy Farms area. So as we're dealing with new developments, new subdivisions, you can see down in that area, the new, the asphalt that's being laid, you can see some of the houses that are being built. So this set of aerials that we get provide us a lot of information that we didn't have before. A picture is worth a thousand words and that's what we're trying to do and, and the great thing is, is for aerials, it's a very cheap price, so.
That's really cool.
Pretty close to your house.
What's your historical timeline?
So with this, the other thing that we have, so in the past, we had the Utah, uh, Google historical imagery that we get from the state, that one's the six-inch resolution and the great thing about this is you get not only the new stuff, but you get a historical stuff. With the near map, they go all the way back to 2014, with the Google, you can see they go back to, what is it, 2011 or something like that? They might even have some 98, I can't remember, but you can turn on and off those aerials and if you ever have any questions, feel free to give us a call over in the GIS division. We can help you pull those up or, or figure out how to turn them on and off to get what you want. And the swipe feature is on both of our maps, so you can swipe and see the change real time, so it's really nice.
Something else to note is just that also we have the ability in a natural disaster to get up-to-date, real-time imagery using near map, they offer a service. So if, for example, the back east where they had some of those tornadoes go through, they were able to get updated imagery within a couple of weeks, so.
Do you have any questions about this?
Any questions for Sean?
No questions, but awesome, yeah, super awesome. The place I worked before, where I retired from a few years ago, Spanish Fork was always a place where I would go and say, why can't we do something like this? This little hometown in Utah, in Utah County has a GIS department that does this with three people. We have 600 employees and can't find a maintenance station on the map. Maybe that's a little tough. These guys are awesome. I mean, I don't, I can't tell you how much money that, the, the citizens of Spanish Fork have saved because of the work that these gentlemen have done. Um, to be able to display it, to be able to make good decisions in real time, it's invaluable, so congratulations, you guys did a tremendous job.
I just wanted to add, they're going to BYU tomorrow.
UVU. Eat that microphone, Jared.
Sorry, it's just UVU, I thought it was BYU.
I got it, I got it. It's a state college.
So no, they are going to UVU to present the GIS system and we are second to none.
Totally.
I mean, in the state, everybody looks to us, they're asking what Spanish Fork's doing with it and this is just one example.
Thanks guys, thanks Sean.
Very cool. Thank you, Sean.
Thanks Sean.
Thanks Travis. So interesting, that tie, Shane, did you just make, it's really a nice tie, I just wondered if you.
Gorgeous.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to be clear. Just wanted to get you on the record.
I like Travis's tie.
Oh, okay.
I changed my example, I apologize.
Thanks guys. Okay, uh, 101 is over, so we're on to item number six, the consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle, any discussion on the consent items? Okay, uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, moves us on to item number seven, we have quite a few public hearing, uh, items tonight, uh, we'll go to A first, uh, the disposition, disposition of property 601 South Main, Tyler Jacobson.
Back in 2019, if you go to the, oh, I've got it right here, don't I, Nick?
You do.
The next slide, we bought a parcel of property that's close to our fairgrounds, so you can see just north of this larger parcel that's, uh, it's 9.38 acres. We bought this with the intent of using it for parking and then also for a maintenance building for our, uh, our Parks and Recreation Department. And, um, we, there's, there's some, some of what we actually, um, there's a, a great opportunity, um, for, for, um, uh, for a, a potential use at the front of this property that, uh, um, that we'd like to, to entertain, so there's about a parcel, this is, this represents one acre of property, um, we're looking to sell, uh, about 0.75 acres of this property. And how this all came about is we have a, uh, we actually have a local business that, uh, due to some unfortunate circumstances, they're not able to stay in the building that they're currently in. And so they're looking for a new place to locate, they've actually, um, had a, a challenge in, in finding a spot and we're looking to locate outside of Spanish Fork City. And so they approached us and asked if there was any chance that, uh, that we would entertain uh, an offer for, for this, uh, specific piece of property because it felt like, um, the, uh, the, the type of business that they are would, uh, would, would be a, a great fit for that area. And so, um, with that, um, we, we have this public hearing today, uh, to potentially surplus this, this parcel.
Perfect, thank you Tyler.
So Tyler, just to be clear.
Yeah.
The, what we're talking about right now is to approve a surplus, not approve a sale at all.
Correct, just, just to approve the sale of this property. So in order to, uh, for the, any city-owned property, we have to give 14 days notice before a public hearing, uh, which is what was, what, what has been done and after those 14 days, um, a public hearing is required before we can actually even entertain an offer to sell it.
Perfect. Go to a public hearing, see if there's anybody in the public that, that needs to speak to this and then ask any more questions if we have them.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to go into public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in public hearing, anybody here to speak to this item? Okay, entertain a motion, go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, go out of public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing, any more discussion or questions for Tyler on this?
I just, so will we finally tear down those buildings, Seth? Okay, that's all I want to hear.
He doesn't want to tear down the buildings while things are in them.
We're not, it's not, go tell him you respect the time, because it's not in there.
Could you approach the mic, please?
Seth locked himself in.
Yeah, we're looking, we're currently using those, those, uh, buildings for some storage for equipment, but, uh, within, within the next, uh, uh, few months, we'll be, we'll be looking to, uh, possibly relocate a business here, uh, and then during that timeframe. So it'll be, it'll be between now and probably the first of July, when, when you'll see some changes take place down there. Yeah, we don't, we don't want to leave those there.
Will the parking be ready for yesterday?
Probably not, uh, we don't know that yet, we're still doing some environmental studies on the property, but we are, we are planning to design the parking and have that portion of it done, uh, so that, uh, once we know that we're clear and we can, we can actually start utilizing it, but we'll, we'll actually, that'll be a budget item that will have to get approved, uh, because it's a, it's a pretty extensive parking lot, as you can see. But that doesn't mean that we won't be able to use, we've used a portion of it, uh, last year anyway and we're hoping that maybe even if it's not completely completed, that we could still use it for, for some additional parking. Thanks Dale.
Thanks Dale. We might ask Dave Euler to come out of retirement, take tickets, parking there too, when it gets done, don't you think? Perfect, uh, any more discussion or, uh, or entertain a motion?
Mayor, I, I would just comment that this seems like a much better use of this property as a business than it does a, a public facility. Um, with access to Main Street like that, it just, to me, it makes sense to, that the city surpluses this and, and let some business come in and, and generate some tax revenue for us.
Good point.
With that, I would make a motion to approve the surplus of this property.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Argyle, any discussion on that motion? Okay, this is a roll call vote, Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilman Order?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, it takes us to item B, ordinance 522, authorizing amendments to the construction standards of the city, proposed amendments to policy 4.39. Jared Johnson.
It's his birthday tomorrow. City's birthday.
Tomorrow is, but who else's birthday?
Do you know?
I know whose it is.
I'll expect that phone call.
It's, it's Jared Johnson's birthday.
It's not your birthday too tomorrow? Saturday.
We'll give your, they'll, on the recording of this, they'll put your cell phone number at the bottom, so everybody.
Well, that's great, I didn't know that, so. Uh, what you got here is amendments to the city standards, um, there, most of these amendments, most all of them are just modifications to the existing standards with the sub, with two additional wastewater manholes, one's for a grease trap and one's for water sampling. One of the modifications is to the LID inlet box, this is just to surround it with sand instead of clay, let the water out of it. We're going to modify the commercial collector road to have a 10-foot trail on one side. This modifies the curb and gutter standards to be more clear. What we mean by that is we're a 30-inch curb and gutter, we still have a 24-inch curb and gutter because we have existing, so we have it in the standards, but we want to make it more clear that our standard is the 30-inch or anything new. Um, modifications to the electrical standards, this is more cleanup than anything, just to clarify what element we use or what conduit we use where, so. Is there any questions? I guess we'll come back to that.
Yeah, we ask him or come back to that, it's a public hearing, so if there's anybody from the public here, we could go into public hearing for this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon to go into public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in public hearing for this item, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, we could go out of public hearing, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, motion by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing, any questions for Jared on any of these?
So Jared, were they using something other than sand? Because I've built a few of these and everything was sand. We're just clarifying that they should, they have to use sand. That they need to, okay. Some of them are backfilled with clay, doesn't let the water out very well. So this just adds that one foot of sand around the box. Okay.
If there's no other questions, a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 5-22, authorizing amendments to the construction standards of the city.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall, any discussion on this? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
That passes. Jared, your birthday tomorrow, Spanish Fork's 167, how old are you? 137.
I'm 10 years.
Item C, you're doing item C too.
Yep.
Okay.
This one's easy, it's an agreement between the Solid Waste District and Utah County. Our portion of this is just to accept the road dedication, so the agreement outlines what improvements will be made by the district and what the county will pay for and the county's going to deed the road, so they're going to deed the road up front, this is just us to accept the road.
You sign that?
And let's go to public hearing.
Okay, motion made, seconded by going to public hearing, motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall, go into public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing, anybody from the public here to speak on this? Do you want to speak as the public or a council member on this?
Neither.
Okay. Motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon to go out of public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are out of public hearing, Councilman Gordon, you're on the Solid Waste District.
Yeah.
Anything you need to say to this?
Nope.
Or anybody else?
I've signed it, so I move to approve Utah County's South, Utah Valley Solid Waste District Road Dedication Agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Euler, uh, this is a roll call vote, any discussion on that motion? Okay, roll call vote, Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
That passes.
Mayor, you're doing really good.
What do you think?
Yeah, I like where you're going down the road, like I'm following you.
Would you like to make a, would you like to make a motion that I do really?
He's only done half of them, Stacey.
No, he's just, he's on a good road.
I'm afraid you've just jinxed it.
That'd throw me off now. Over to item D, which is David Anderson, on, uh, the, uh, ordinance, uh, 722 PEG, General Plan Amendment to Change General Plan Designation for Property Located at 1550 West, 400 South, from Rural Residential to Urban Density Residential.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, do you mind if I cover E as well, same time?
Yes, let's do D and E together and we'll discuss any questions on either one.
Okay, thank you, so leading off with D, uh, which incidentally both D and E were recently part of conversations that we had with the city council about zone changes. In one case, the zoning was changed and the other wasn't. For item number D, uh, which involves property that a lot of people, I think, know better as the Sugar Beet Site, the zoning was changed, um, from industrial zone to residential zone at this location and the action that's before you deny with proposed change in general plan would essentially set the table for a zone change that would come to the city council at some point in the future, um, with the idea that a number of different zoning districts are consistent with this proposed urban density residential designation, um, which is a change from, I want to make sure I get this right, I think right now it's a low-density residential designation, um, which both the Planning Commission and the Development Review Committee have recommended be approved, um, for a number of different reasons, including that, frankly, we would, uh, wholeheartedly support the redevelopment of this site. We believe that residential uses in this area are very appropriate and that probably fairly intense residential uses are going to be needed simply in order to fund, uh, a project that would involve putting the site to a new use. So this particular change to urban density residential for item D, D, both the Planning Commission, city council, I'm sorry, Planning Commission and Development Review Committee recommended that that be approved. The other site, which also was recently discussed relative to a potential zone change, currently the zoning of this property is industrial and the proposal now wouldn't change the zoning, but likewise again would set the table for a future zone change, the proposed mixed-use general plan designation would accommodate a number of potential zoning districts that could house a number of different uses, residential uses certainly, as well as things like professional office development, retail uses as well with zoning districts like the Commercial Two Zone or maybe your Business Park Zone, well as, excuse me, as well as zones that would, like I said just a second ago, exclusively allow for residential development here. This wasn't the general plan designation that the applicant originally proposed, they proposed, in fact, the same designation as what's being proposed for item number D, but as we deliberated, excuse me, deliberated a little bit during the Development Review Committee meeting, we seem to believe collectively, I think both staff and the applicant, that there was some value in at least leaving the door open for some uses that might be non-residential in nature. Assigning this particular designation to this property here, which incidentally is northeast of the hospital, I shouldn't take for granted that everybody knows where we're, we're looking right now, but this would allow for the property to be zoned with multiple zoning districts potentially, it really does provide a lot of options for both an applicant to make proposals in the future and use the city council to consider the merit of those with the general plan designation that allows for, like I said, potentially a lot of different things. In case I didn't mention this a second ago, both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission, as with the other item, have recommended that this proposal be approved to change the general plan designation to mixed use.
Is that the hospital?
That, right there is not, but it's just off of this image to the south, so literally, like if I were to try to guess, it'd be about there. This is Canyon Creek Parkway, this is Marketplace Drive, the road that runs around the hospital, if you can picture that, so this is the northernmost intersection from the hospital site on Canyon Creek.
What, what's the use words around that?
This right here, this is city-owned property, this is, I'm not sure how best to describe it.
It's wetland.
It's wetland, we know at least further south from what we can see right here on this image, that there's some landfill, the, I would maybe blind Tara if I tried to point out where, for example, the solar farm is.
Yeah.
To the south of, again, what we can see on this image.
So Dave, next time you put one of these together, can you zoom out just a bit, have a different map that gives some context?
Sure, and we can do those too.
I had a heck of a time figuring out where that could work.
That's great feedback, thank you. So in this case, we're talking about this property here, hospital being here.
Dave, this end of the table is fine with the map. Just wanted to point that out. Gray hair got us right where we needed to go.
Dave, I do have a question, will you just tell us a couple of things that can go in urban density? Do we have anything that is currently in that?
Two projects have been approved, one is under construction, another one, the horizontal improvements have been made, that is roads and things like that, what I'm talking about now is located, if you can just maybe go right over in this direction, the Ridgeline Apartments, right here, we think that they'll probably start to go vertical building those apartments here in the next month or so, that's the first project that was approved back, I think in two thousand and twenty, the other one is the condominium project that is just west of the neighborhood Walmart, those are the two that have been approved.
So just so our residents know, urban density includes residential and retail together.
Urban density is not, it, it is an exclusively residential designation, yes.
Perman? Okay, so urban village can have the retail in it.
That's a mixed-use zone that we have, yes, the urban village zone, urban, that's a, a term that we used when the zone was created, just to try to differentiate between high density and something that's.
We don't want to use that word a lot.
Greater than that.
So we say urban density.
Is that, is that it?
I don't know, that's what I was wondering.
On the other end, it's the estate, which we seem to have, have kind of struggled with that designation, so maybe we should just stick to high, low, really high, higher, highest?
We understand that.
Incredibly high.
Thank you.
And whatever you say high density is in Spanish Fork, you'll find out in a week in the legislature is pretty low density for what they, for where else.
So did I get that right, this, the applicant proposed urban, whatever.
Urban density residential.
Urban density there.
Right.
You all met and felt like mixed uses is a better, general plan designation to allow some opportunity in zoning. Okay. I like the opportunity to have some commercial in this area, so that's a good idea.
Dave, going back to the first area, do we have any timeline as far as the roads? I know there's talks of shifting of the roads and making some adjustments, especially on that, that south intersection, do we know, would this development go in before those roads are adjusted?
Are you talking Canyon Creek?
Talking, no, right here, so if you zoom out from this area.
The state road on the west side.
And you've got the curb, we're talking about extending that through, I'm just wondering what the timeline between this development and that road might be.
I have not seen a timeline for that, my guess would be that.
It's the same timeline as the intersection, right?
I would assume, right?
I would think so.
So I, I don't know how we'd even predict that at this point. I think we'd like for that to happen within the next ten years, we have some reason to think that it will happen maybe quite a bit sooner than that, but.
But it's dependent on the intersection street.
I think that's when the work likely would happen.
Wasatch Pallet's got to move first.
And that's got to happen first, absolutely.
This is the first of potentially two legislative actions to put a development here.
Thank you for mentioning that, so in terms of just the continuum that would have to be followed for the uses to change on either of these sites, this again, this provides basically the blueprint for what zoning could be assigned to be consistent with the general plan by you through some future legislative act. Both of the designations afford different options, essentially with what's proposed here though, they're just residential options at different densities, that's where the all that it boils down to.
Do you feel like access for this location to increase the density, the access, road access, neighborhoods, neighboring neighborhoods, makes sense to have increased density here? Obviously the DRC I guess approved it, so, or recommends it to be approved, but I, I, typically when we, when we move to a higher density, one of the main things we're focused on is access to main roads, and so I'm guessing, I'm wondering what are our accesses here? Somebody that lives in this neighborhood and needs to get to a grocery store and needs to get to I fifteen, are those accesses already in place?
Access to really significant transportation routes is in place here today and I think that's only going to get better, so I would make a strong case that properties in this general area, not just this one, and you know frankly, I understand that probably, as is often the case, when we start talking about putting really intense letting uses next to existing neighborhoods, people have concerns with that, but with access being one of the main things that you look for in terms of being able to accommodate the needs of, whether it's really intense commercial development or really intense residential development, properties in this area I think really should be considered for, let's just say, a really dense residential project because not only do they have access to, I mean this is a state route here, I believe this is a state route as well for south, I, there would be some interconnectivity through neighborhoods also, that would have to be dealt with, I think with some tact and care in order to address what concerns I would anticipate neighbors would have with a new use going in here which currently does not connect to that neighborhood, but for me, the real game changer from an access perspective here comes with the anticipated interchange, all of a sudden you have great access to everything north and south along Wasatch Front, that's why, looking big picture at the area, I think we should think big about what makes the most sense to put here, I think that's what separates this area from the rest of the community.
It's really important for today that we're not talking a density number, right? We're talking a range of densities that could potentially be here depending on a future application.
Right.
Right? And I would agree with you Dave, that not only is there an interchange proposed here, there's a UTA stop right there, there are only what, five state roads in the entire city and this fronts one of them, so if, if there is a place to, that has good access, this is definitely one of them. Enough of that, probably need to hear what the public has to say.
Good, yep, yep, great comments, we'll, we'll, we can go into public comment and see if anybody from the public would like to speak to this?
They've explained them individual, or sep, together, but they need to be individual.
Can we go into public hearing for both of those items? So we got to go into individual public hearing for item D.
D first.
Okay, let's go into, let's entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon to go into public hearing for item D, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in public hearing for item D, this is the southwest quadrant that we've been talking about, the old, soon to be old Wasatch Pallet site, anybody from the public that would like to speak to the mayor and council about this site? Name, rank and serial number? Just your name.
Mayor and council, my name is Jeremy Endicott, I'm with the developer, Ped Companies, we're based in Provo, Utah, I think Dave did a great job describing the, the request for a general plan amendment, but I'm happy to answer any questions and I may have some slides to share, I'm not sure if that's, if you guys have it or not, but.
Can we do that now or after public hearing?
Uh, we can do that after public hearing, show your slides if we want to see more of that, that's all right.
Yeah, if you guys have questions, but.
Perfect. Any questions for him right now, you want to close public comment and then ask him questions too if you have them? Let's do that, let's see if there's any other public comments, thanks Jeremy. Anybody else to speak to this item? Okay, if not, we'll entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion, motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to go out of public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing and the applicant's here too, so any questions for Jeremy or anybody else on this, on this general plan amendment?
My, mine might be for, for Dave. And it's probably a redundant question because of what Shane asked, so right now, you're asking for this urban density for future project, but this zoning is not necessarily going to be the one?
Okay, thank you, so the current zoning of the property is rural residential and that's because of the change that the council made just a couple of months ago.
Right.
So the zone is indeed the law that dictates what the property can do today with the property. What's being proposed would conceivably, with the understanding that the council follows the general plan when you make zone changes, would set the table for the council to be able to consider new uses in the future than what currently the general plan contemplates. Right now, the general plan simply wouldn't accommodate zoning districts that would allow for the density that I think the applicant ultimately would like to see put on the property, residential density, is that all?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just got the feeling that you were saying what Shane says, that we're going to change this, but then it's going to come forward again as we go forward with what maybe they're proposing is going to be different than what we're changing?
Not different, but if this follows the typical model, and I think it probably would, you eventually would see a proposed zone change to change the law as to what can happen with the property and that would come with a very, very detailed development proposal.
Okay.
So that at that point in time, you, the Development Review Committee, Planning Commission, everybody that's involved, either in advisory role or with making a decision, would know exactly what the proposal contemplates, that might be a couple of months from now, might be six months, might be a couple of years, we don't know exactly, but again, the, the nature of this is consistent, I think, with the broader vision.
So allows them to start planning.
With some indication that the, the city council is on board with the idea of having a dense residential use here.
Okay, so my question to him is just how dense are you looking for?
Yeah, that's a great question, did my slides get over?
Yes, sir, you have to, you can have a sit back.
So I think you guys are already familiar with the area, you know, located just south of I fifteen, next to a single-family residential community and the city-owned Disc Golf Course just to the south and the Spanish Fork River Trail going up to the Disc Golf Course and then we're, we're currently that industrial site which is about twenty acres. David already mentioned the general plan, there's already a lot of high density and urban density along with mixed use, kind of in that immediate area where the, the future interstate exchange will be placed along with the, hopefully the, the frontrunner. So our, our proposed use is to develop a single-family rental homes on a single plat, so we're not intending to develop apartments, we're intending to develop one, two and three bedroom homes that are one and two stories, and so I think it, you know, it matches the neighborhood directly to the east much more than, you know, a four or five-story apartment complex. You know, our, our density would be somewhere between eight to fourteen units to the acre is what we're looking at, so not reaching the far end of the urban density spectrum, and that's just because these are, these are single-family homes, you know, we're going to be required to provide sixty percent of the units with garages according to zoning code, and so, you know, it's going to be much more spread out than a, you know, multi-level residential. So here's some preliminary drawings of kind of what we're looking at doing, what one-bedroom homes would be a duplex, and then two and three-bedroom homes would be standalone with small backyards, and some, we would mix in some two-story product just for a diversity of, of use. And kind of just some, some benefits to the neighborhood, one, we're eliminating a intense industrial use, you know, next to single-family homes, as I mentioned, it's a lower density in height than an apartment complex, it also provides an additional housing solution for, for middle-income earners, I was looking at the Zillow statistics for Spanish Fork, home prices have gone up over thirty percent over the last twelve months, the average home price is four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in Spanish Fork, and I think like fifteen years ago it was like two hundred thousand dollars, and so it, it's a much higher barrier to entry for a young working professional, a young family, it's becoming increasingly less affordable to own a home in Spanish Fork, it takes longer to save up the equity for a down payment, and so, you know, this will provide a solution for people that don't want to live in an apartment but are raising a family, or just starting out a career and want to have their own home but can't afford one yet, or for those on the other opposite end of the spectrum who are looking to downsize, they want a single-level home, they don't want to maintain a yard, but they still want to be in this community, so it's a, it's a new housing solution, I think provides a lot of value and as I mentioned, we will continue the Spanish Fork River Trail through our property, which will be a great amenity to the public, and we'll also clean up some of the environmental contamination that, you know, is due to the industrial use since the property was developed in nineteen oh five. So we're asking for a general plan amendment. So we're asking for a general plan amendment for this site, from low density to urban density, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So homeowners association owned by you guys? Or are you selling?
It would be one single plat. And so it'd be professionally managed. So PEG companies, we have multiple apartments in downtown Salt Lake and throughout the Wasatch Front. We have a professional management company. So there wouldn't be an HOA because it would all be owned by PEG companies.
Okay.
We intend to develop it, manage it.
So it'll be managed by PEG? And you say you're from Springville?
We're from Provo.
Provo, okay.
Yeah.
But the entire thing will be rentals?
Correct.
Okay.
You asked that Springville question like there was a rivalry coming after.
No, I... I want to hear that he's from Utah.
Okay, all right.
A local company, I'm okay... that makes me...
Gotcha.
I like that. Sorry, it doesn't make a difference, but I like the fact that you're from Utah.
Yeah. Well, PEG develop... you can do a lot of research on PEG development. You can click on a website, find projects you guys have done all over the state of Utah, outside of the state of Utah, but this isn't something that's foreign to you guys. You guys have built similar stuff, but...
Yeah. We have high-level people in the company that live in Spanish Fork, and I know they'll take a lot of pride in this project.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? This was discussed quite a bit, that Planning Commission, DRC, and stuff in the memo that you can read here as well. One thing I would say, Councilman Euler, I know the discussion happened in Planning Commission about the road, the frontage, obviously trying to fix that, widen that, bring it up to code, that because it was built in 1904, that it's not there now. It's dirt that you fall off on the edge now, but there would be a lot of stuff that's improved about it.
I've got just one more question, which would be probably for the city. The triangle piece of property directly west of this one, kind of, it's between the freeway and this one, there's the river to the south. Would it make sense at this time to also include that piece to match the general plan amendment that we're looking at today, or is it better to wait for a proposal to come before the city?
I think it makes a lot of sense to be proactive and to go ahead and propose a change. There's a similar issue with the other proposal and the little piece of property that's adjacent to that, that simply weren't included with the noticing that we provided on this item. So we can't...
Can't do it tonight.
It's not ready for action tonight, but I would suggest that maybe with the next round of maybe like citywide general plan amendments that we make, we include those two with that. I think I completely agree with your logic, though. I understand.
Can we zoom out and turn on the general plan real quick?
Yeah.
So just philosophically, I do not like general plan amendments for a property. I think that is just not the way we should be doing business, so I like what Councilman Euler had to say, that that makes sense. An area makes sense to general plan, not a property. I like that this... I like the proposal, though. I think it makes sense to put more density next to the freeway with access, separate from the neighborhood. But I don't want to judge this request based on the proposal we just saw, because I don't think they're one and the same. It's a general plan amendment today. We're going to talk about a zone change someday in the future, where we can talk about what this road should be, what access they need to have, all of those things. So I think that we separate those a little bit, but this is something we should have done long ago and not a one-off. And we've talked about this before. I know that some of the folks in the Planning Commission aren't on board with me on this, but I don't like... I don't like general plan for properties. I think that's... that's a... that's short-sighted on our part, but I support this change for sure.
If I hear you, it hurts the document a little bit that we have, the general plan, right? If you're just piecing it as we go along...
It's not a general plan.
It's not a general plan.
No, it's a one-off.
We could... we refer to it as the Bible, but we change the Bible every time, just for little bits and pieces. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That's a really...
Thanks, Shane.
Smart thing to say.
Coming from this end of the table?
I know, it's like, wait a second. I'm going to move.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion or questions for anybody here? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 7-22, PEG general plan amendment, changing general plan designation from property at 1550 West, 400 South, from rural residential to urban density residential with the staff findings.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Marshall. Any discussion on this motion? If not, it is a roll call vote. Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
No.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman... Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Passes. Councilman Argyle, do you want any time to... for your vote or anything? Does anybody want any time for their vote?
No, but thank you.
Okay.
Motion to go into public for item... excuse me, public hearing for item E, ordinance 622.
Second.
Motion to go into public hearing for item E by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Euler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? We're in public hearing for item E. Dave went over this. Any further questions for Dave? This is in the northeast quadrant, other part of the city, up north of the hospital.
Was that set?
What?
It was mine. No, it was...
I threw you right under the bus.
Oh, wow!
Everybody to attend next council meeting that's here. When is our next council meeting? February what?
8th.
8th, and...
First.
February 1st. Our city manager will be providing donuts, so come get donuts.
And if you want to, no.
Yeah, if you want to, come, too.
Probably bring a cigar.
That's true. That's right. Yeah, it'll be that time, too. Cool.
Very cool.
All right. Any... after that rude interruption, phone?
We're in public hearing.
I didn't hear anybody.
We're in public hearing. Anybody from the public want to speak to this? Okay?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilwoman Beck to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing for item E. Any discussion from the body here?
Dave, did... so refresh me.
The applicant was here last time.
No, I know. Of this?
Is that correct? And they're here tonight. Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Did we not just do some stuff for... No, no. Go back.
You want the map? Sorry. All right, I'm sorry. There you go.
So this is the property we're talking about. Did we not just do some zoning?
The white.
The white, yeah. For the hospital. Did we not just do something for this? Did we just... or am I imagining?
I don't think we've made any changes to either the general plan or the zoning map for the hospital.
We just... we just, I think, brought in this piece at the time that we were doing all of these other...
Oh, that's right. That's right. There was one little piece there that was mixed use.
You can maybe turn that off real quick and turn the zoning map on. That might just help illustrate the changes that were talked about here.
Okay. And we just did them, okay? Thanks.
We did a handful of things. We made a change here. When I say we, of course, I mean you.
For some reason, I was thinking we did that when we were talking.
It was on... it was discussed.
Okay. Great. Thanks. That was...
Any other questions for Dave about this area? Okay? Are we in public...
No, we didn't.
We're out of public hearing for this? Okay, any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 06-22, King and Creek Parkway general plan amendment. The proposal would change the general plan designation of the property at 2100 North King and Creek Parkway from industrial to mixed use.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle and seconded by Councilman Gordon. This is a roll call vote as well. Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
That passes. Okay. Item E is finished. We're to item F, Sunset Village. This request is for a preliminary plat approval for a master plan development with 24 homes located at 250 West, 900 North.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, thank you. A preliminary plat was previously approved for the subject property here, which is, I would still say, behind Shopko. Picture that. A property that does, I would say, have limited access, that's one challenge that it has.
I don't know this lot at Shopko with this little map. I got you.
Well, there's that thing.
Gee, do you not know your city?
Apparently I do.
Hits on the freeway and goes north. I don't think you pass anything through the city.
You know, occasionally I do.
No, we... we saw this years ago, so we're in the know.
Okay.
What's the Mexican place right there?
Mintos is really good.
Not unless...
So noted. You've never been to Casa Salsa? Appreciate the feedback.
I know where it is. I just, from this little picture, I mean, it's a property in the middle of Spanish Fork.
Could have named it Casa Salsa Village.
I wanted to complain all night.
It also includes the address, Shane.
You're mentioning the 900 North, 200 West. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. That would be... so I... that would be... I think I'd be way off, but 900 North, 200...
He's getting you. So on this one, the zoning was changed a couple of years ago. So zoning changed. Zoning changed R3, and a project that is almost identical to what's proposed tonight was approved by the council. That project's approval expired. So then, when the applicant got to the point where they were ready to resuscitate that, they had the pleasure of going back to their designers to make changes so that the project would conform to the rules that are in place today. And they've done that. They've updated their plans so that they conform to our current design standards, those things that you took action on earlier tonight that periodically get changed by the city council. Those changes have been accounted for to where the project as proposed now meets the current city standards. It conforms to the provisions of the R3 zone as a master plan development with 24 residential units, and both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have recommended that it be approved. Now, given that this... again, the zoning's already in place for this, this is just approving a subdivision. There's no public hearing associated with this. I think we might have misnoted that relative to how it's listed on the agenda. You can certainly take public comment if you'd like, but you're not obligated to do that.
I see just 23 here. Did I miss it?
One of the units is an up-and-down twin home, if you will.
I see.
Just one.
I see.
Probably 23.
Which one is it, Brandon? 23? Okay.
If I remember right, initially, this was... and maybe I'm wrong. This was proposed as a 55 and over two units. Is that still the case?
There aren't any restrictions in place for that, and I think most of the buildings will have basements, if not all of them. Is that the plan? But, and maybe, Mr. Porter, if you can go to some of the slides, just sort of the building elevations. I think an effort has been made, and I'm just kind of regurgitating what I've been told, to have sort of a main floor living set up as if it would potentially accommodate, you know, typical investor type of a buyer. This project is going to be an actual condominium plat to where individual units could be conveyed separately. People can own their homes as proposed with this project here versus this... sorry, as opposed to this being a rental project.
I like it. I think it's a good spot.
They can own their home and...
And eat all the salsa they want.
Yeah, that's true. But they do the maintenance on their homes, their yards and everything, too. There's no HOA that's going to take care of all the...
There is HOA. Yeah, four, but there is common area with it.
Gotcha.
So uniform maintenance throughout the project, in fact, which is one of the things that, just for me personally, is attractive about this particular type of plat, whereas the property owners will only own what is directly underneath the footprint of their buildings. Everything else will be common, commonly maintained. That... that does a great service, I think, to the community in terms of how things are taken care of over time, so...
Is there an open space there, like for a small little play area or a park area?
No, there's just green areas, and there's also common parking areas. And then the HOA, the IDO is...
Brandon, come on.
You got a great voice. Everybody wants to hear it.
Brandon Kirk with Real Estate and Development. I'm representing the property owner on this project. There is just common space, like green areas, parking, the roadway, and things like that that will be maintained by the HOA and then strictly enforced, like parking and things like that, so you don't have trailers and things like that.
Is there already a sound barrier wall between there and the freeway?
There's... well, there's the freeway sound barrier wall, but we're adding an additional wall, which will kind of create a little no-man's-land alley behind the property and the freeway.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah. It meets standards for parking? Common parking? Okay.
It exceeds then.
Okay.
Whatever that's worth.
I like it.
Thanks, Brandon.
Yep, thank you.
May I mention one other thing?
Please, yeah.
Subject of discussion with Development Review Committee, accessory dwelling units. With this particular project, simply put, there would be no way for any of these homes to meet the requirements that we have for ADUs. So even though they have basements, there's only one that's planned to have dwelling space in the basement. All of the remainder of the homes there would not be eligible for accessory dwelling units. The applicant has committed to have that represented in their codes, covenants, and restrictions. And anyway, just wanted to make that clear.
Thanks, Dave.
We need to go on.
Great. It's not a public hearing.
No, it's not.
Is that right? It's on our public hearing agenda, but...
It's not required. I know we listed that way on the agenda. I'm sorry, I just got that.
You want to go in public hearing? There's nobody here to speak to it.
No.
No need to.
All right, okay.
I'll move to approve Sunset Village. This request for the preliminary plat approval for a master plan development with 24 homes for a master plan development with twenty-four homes located at two fifty west, ninth north, with staff findings.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler, this is a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Passes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
After item F, we're going to eight, number eight A, new business is the golf course point of sale system?
We're selling the golf course?
Our golfer.
Point of sale, it's a little.
Golf expert, Dale Robbins.
I'm just glad I don't have a map today.
I don't know if I had something.
I'm just saying, glad I don't have a map.
I move to that approach.
That's only one vote, right?
All the truth hurts.
Don't leave with that, Dale. Save that for later.
You've probably read the staff report, so Ryan's been doing some investigation into a new reservation system. Ours is four, currently four reservations, which is outdated. As he did some research on these and found that all of the courses in Utah Valley have this new reservation system, except for one course in, in all of the valley, so, and many in St. George and Salt Lake have gone to this system. And one of the things that helps, for those of you that have tried our online reservation system, it's a little clunky, at least that's what I found, this makes it really nice for the user, recognizes the user when they put their name in, your information all pops up, you don't have to repopulate that every single time. And there are, there are many other benefits that I listed in the report, but we're currently paying sixteen hundred and fifty dollars annually for this service. It is going to go up, because we don't have all the new latest and greatest modules. If we renewed with our current reservation system, it's, it's going to increase our costs. This one is fifty-four hundred dollars a year. That's why I put in there, our increase would be thirty-seven fifty annually, norm, and we will, I will put this into budget revision, which will come out to you next month. The reason we're asking ahead of time is because we need a transition period, we need a training period, before we start playing golf again, we want to make sure everything's implemented and in place and all the staff's been trained on the system. So we're trying to get a jump on that before we just submit it with the budget. Any questions?
Are you going to increase fees to cover that thirty-seven hundred, or is that just going to be?
No, we're not.
Okay.
As a, I mean, golf course is covered itself.
It'll be, it'll be covered within the existing revenue structure, yes, to answer your question, we don't need to increase fees to, to do that.
Shane made a comment in the last meeting that I was thinking about in light, you know, additional thirty-seven fifty, is this something that could have been in a consent item? What's the reasoning for it being? Because it's a contract?
And changes.
And changes?
Both, yeah, it's an increase in the budget and I need a contract signed.
Yeah, okay.
And it is a, it is a, I can't remember if it's a two-year or three-year contract, so it's not, I mean, it's, it's renewable.
This is just going to be for my education, so be patient. How does the procurement work? Can you go procure up to a certain level, a dollar amount, whoever you want? You have to put bids out for this? Just curious how you get someone like this under contract?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Oh, he's stuck, he can't get to the microphone.
Bring it in.
Just about made it.
Now that I'm here, I'll defer my time to Jordan. The answer?
Stand up that way.
Give her a Jordan.
Oh, George.
Go kooks.
Three of me girls. The answer to your question, yes?
You follow the procurement process?
All of those are in play, we have certain abilities and opportunities here, Jordan can speak his own.
This is the lamest answer I've ever heard, ever.
I was speaking to you, I thought I wore.
This is a rough night.
So I'm going to, I'm going to preface what I'm going to say with, I've been dealing with money coming in for the past six years, so I'm learning our disbursement policy. Chris Thompson and Jared Johnson are actually reviewing our procurement code currently, we've been doing that for the past couple of months, so I'm learning a little bit about that, but anytime we're going to enter into a contract with somebody, it's something that we'll consider whether or not to bring it to you, but it, I mean, that's something we can write into the code, a certain dollar amount with contracts, right?
I'm not, to Brandon's point, I'm, I'm okay with a certain dollar amount, I'm just more concerned about how you procure it. Can you just call anyone you want and say, hey, we want your service, Mr. Smith, I don't care if you're two hundred dollars more than Mr. Jones, you can do that?
I think it depends on the type of product and or service, sometimes we'll enter into what they call professional service agreements with somebody, so I'm still learning some of that stuff, so.
With software. We don't always have to go out to a full RFP or RFQ, we can get bids, so in this case, we've got two bids from two companies, we know what, there aren't many resources or sources out there, and so we're, we've been comparing the four system with the, what's this one calling it?
Four Up.
Four Up, seriously?
Yeah, I know.
I, I'm guessing it was like somebody that worked for four and now they're like, they left and it's four up something, dot, 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 but, so we, we, where there are limited sources, limited options, and we, we have, we get what we can, and then we can go.
So this isn't a sole source, you've had bids?
We got the two, we have what we had, four, and we have four up. That's lit, we're going to call it something else, we're just going to name it our own thing.
Thanks, thank you.
Any other questions for item A?
I just have a quick question, and I'm not a golfer, so I hope I don't mess this up, but last year, last season, weren't we talking about when people would make online reservations and then they would not show up and we would lose money? So would this system help avoid all of those missed fees?
You have a full season of that, I mean, you can report the roughly fifteen thousand.
Yeah, what we, what we did is we require prepaid tee times.
Right, and so this would take?
Yeah, this, this, yes, this all, it does all that, it's the same, and it's actually worked quite well.
But part of the complaint as the golfer was, our system was different than the other courses, and so if you were a golfer and you played, you know, what's the, it's not East Bay anymore, reserve, preserve, what is it, Provo?
Yeah.
Tempano Gose, yeah, but if you're a golfer and you're planning out your golf month or whatever, will you reserve here? And now, oh, the Oaks, it's a whole different system and it doesn't save my credit card, so when I, when I go back to make that tee time again, I got to type in my credit card information again, this is all one system, you can just select your course you're playing at, it's got my card already, so when Brandon doesn't show up for our foursome, it charges me and then he Venmo's me.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
That's never happened.
Good question.
I never miss the tee times now. The other, I would put you on the spot and ask how the sprinkler system upgrades are going, do you have any?
Uh, yeah.
You could report?
Actually, they're doing quite well. Most of the initial pipes are, are put, they're on schedule, so we're hoping, the back nine's a little tough right now, because it's still under snow, but yeah, I, we just, I just talked to Dalen and Raphael this morning, actually, and, and they're on schedule, so I don't know exactly what that means, other than when, when we originally hired them, they were going to be done by June, so that we didn't miss, mess up the whole summer, so we're still hopeful that they're, they're staying the course. No pun intended, there was no pun intended.
It wasn't intended. You'd have to get a map to show us that.
Yeah, could you pull up?
Sorry, real quick, with this new reservation system, is this an annual contract that we've got with these guys? So year by year, based on what their pricing is, we could go with someone else if we needed to?
We actually locked this in for, I believe it's a two-year contract, yeah.
Dale, I was thinking on what their option was, if we didn't?
Oh, one of the other options, and, and we could do this, one of the other options that they proposed is, is they will trade us one tee time per day, and we pay nothing. So the one tee time that they get per day, they can do whatever they want with, right? They can, they can discount it, they can do whatever. There are some courses that have chosen to go that way, rather than pay the money, as Ryan, as Ryan and I sat down and penciled that out, that can come, that can come to tens of thousands of dollars, up to twenty-five thousand. If you actually pencil that out and one, one foursome per day, per year, during the golf season, yeah, it can, it actually breaks even if it's only a single, every single time, then it's right close to the fifty-four hundred that it would, and, and we, and I think some of these courses that have gone into that was pre-pandemic, when golf may have been a little bit slow, and that would have been a really good deal, but right now, tee times are tough to come by at the Oaks, so it's, it's not a good deal for us, it's better for us just to pay the, pay the annual fee, but they did offer that as an option if we decided we wanted to not, not have an increase in the budget and just give them a tee time. And this other company that we're with now is actually proposing a similar thing, to give us upgrades and stuff, we'll trade you tee times, do whatever, so this is what we feel like's best for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Entertained a motion on this item, if there's no more questions.
I move to approve the license agreement and associated budget increases for the golf course point of sale system. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Marshall, this is a roll call vote as well. Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
That passes.
I move we go into closed session for land transaction and reasonably imminent litigation.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon and seconded by Councilman Euler to go into closed session, this is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
No.
Councilman Gordon?
No, no, I made the motion, so aye, Chad's just being silly.
Oh, okay, but I guess you're, it passes to go into closed session.
He's only won one vote, right?
Yeah, three to two, four to one, however you'd like to say it.
We just need one more vote.